Good afternoon and welcome to the Institute of Divine Metaphysical Research. This is a school, it is not a church. Neither are we affiliated with any religious organizations. This school is a non-profit, non-denominational, religious and scientific research organization dedicated to showing proof of the existence of Yahweh, our Elohim, and the operation of his eternal purpose, pattern, and plan operating throughout eternity to this present day. This school was established as a result of a divine vision and revelation given to our founder, Dr. Henry Clifford Kinley, in the state of Ohio in the year 1931. We were incorporated in the state of California in the year 1958. The Lansing branch was established in 1973, and the dean of the Lansing branch is Dr. Terry Rolfs. In this school, we use the true, correct, and original name and title of the Father, the Word or Son, and the Holy Spirit, which are contained in the original Hebrew text. The true name of the Heavenly Father is Yahweh. It has been properly substituted for Lord. The true title of the Word or Son is Elohim. It has been properly substituted for God. The name of the Holy Spirit manifested in or out of a physical body is Yahshua. It has been erroneously substituted for Jesus Christ. Lord and God are titles and are not names. The Apostle Paul, filled with the Holy Spirit, tells us in 1 Corinthians 8:5 that there are Lord's many and God's many. But we now know that each Lord must have a name, and each God must have a name also. Elohim is a title, but unlike Lord and God, Elohim is a divine title. That means Elohim is the title that our Creator chose for himself. Jesus is a name, but it is an erroneous name. A minor investigation on your heart in a good dictionary or encyclopedia will prove that neither the Hebrew language, the Greek language, nor the Latin language had any characters or letters in their alphabet that would produce the sound that is made by this letter J. Neither was there a letter J in the English language until some 1,400 years after the Messiah's death. Therefore, such names as Jesus and Jehovah are impossible renderings of the true and original name of our Heavenly Father and His Son. Christ is a title just like Lord and God. Yahweh is pure spirit, and in this state, he is incomprehensible and inscrutable. He is the ultimate source, substance, limits, and bounds of everything. We have Yahweh in his pure spirit state symbolized on this chart as a cloud. Yahweh is not a cloud. He merely chose the cloud to symbolize himself because the cloud has no particular or distinctive shape and form. We have drawn this cloud all around the edges of this chart to show you that everything on this chart is within the cloud. In like manner, everything in the universe abides within the pure spirit state of Yahweh. Yahweh, knowing that man could not perceive of him in this pure spirit state, took on shape and took on form right within himself as Elohim. This is the Word or Son, a super incoherent name. That is, having the shape and form of a man, but without flesh and blood. This form can only be seen in divine visions and understood in divine revelations. Later on, this self-same spirit manifested himself in a physical body and walked the earth plain as Yahshua the Messiah, whom the world calls Jesus Christ. Now, there is only one name given unto salvation, so we must know that name. So the simple yet intelligent question we should ask ourselves is what was the name of the Savior during the time that he walked the earth plain? A further understanding of this name and title may be had by reading the preference of the Holy Name Bible. Also in this school, we teach by a divine pattern of the universe. It is called the Divine Pattern because it is Yahweh's pattern. After Yahweh led the children of Israel out of Egypt, he called Moses atop of Mount Sinai and showed him the tabernacle pattern in a vision. Yahweh instructed him to build one exactly like it in the wilderness of Sinai. The pattern had a most holy place, holy place, and court roundabout. These three compartments make up the one tabernacle pattern. In this school, we show proof that everything in the universe abides within the pure spirit state of Yahweh and that absolutely nothing escapes the pattern. Our primary constitutional aims and objectives of the institute are as follows: First, to help you define and to know Yahweh, our Elohim, as he really is and actually exists. Second, to form a nucleus of universal brotherhood of humanity in Yahshua the Messiah without distinction of race, nationality, creed, caste, sex, or color. Third, to investigate the unexplained spiritual law or so-called law of nature and powers latent in man. Fourth, to encourage and promote the study of the scriptures, comparative religion, psychology, philosophy, and modern, practical and occult science. Fifth, to extricate current superstitions, skepticism, and ignorance. Sixth, to learn, know, and understand the operation of Yahweh's eternal purpose through the dispensation and ages. Seventh, to discern and to avoid being deceived by Lucifer, the serpent, the devil, the dragon, Satan, and his demons operating the mystery of iniquity on earth through the dispensations of time. Eighth, to earnestly contend for the common salvation and faith which was once delivered unto the sons or children of Yahweh. Ninth, to make known that Yahweh from the beginning ordained. There is no other name given by men whereby man can be saved, saving the name of Yahshua the Messiah. And tenth, to inherit eternal life now in the kingdom of Yahshua the Messiah with the hope of a mortified vacation in the new earth state. Our watchword is peace; our slogan is to speak the truth.
Let us put our hearts and minds and ask our husband and our Father and our Savior to encourage us to reach down deep and manifest the myriad of gifts that He has given us without any fear, without any, you know, self-searching or self-doubt, and to walk in this creation as kings and queens and recipients of a marvelous gift. In His name, let us all say, hallelujah!
And Yahweh spake unto Moses, saying, "Speak unto the children of Israel that they may bring me an offering of every man that giveth it willingly with his heart; ye shall take my offering; and this is the offering which ye shall take of them: gold, and silver, and brass, and blue, and purple, and scarlet, and fine linen, and goat-tirer, and ram-skins dyed red, and badger-skins, and shittamwood; oil for the light, spices for anointing oil, and for sweet incense, onyx stones, and stones to be set in Ephah and in the breastplate; and let them make me a sanctuary that I may dwell upon them according to all that I show you after the pattern of the tabernacle and the pattern of all the instruments thereof; even so shall we make it; and they shall make an ark of shittamwood: two cubits and a half the length thereof, and a cubic and a half the breadth thereof, and a cubic and a half the height thereof; and thou shalt overlay it with pure gold, within and without; shalt thou overlay it; and shalt thou make upon it a crown of gold round about; and thou shalt cast four rings of gold for it and put them in the four corners thereof; and two rings shall be in the one side of it and two rings in the other side of it; and thou shalt make staves of shittamwood and overlay them with gold; and thou shalt put the staves into the rings by the size of the ark; and the ark may be born with them. The staves shall be in the rings of the ark; they shall not be taken from it; and thou shalt put into the ark the testimony which I shall give thee; and thou shalt make a mercy seat of pure gold: two cubits and a half the length thereof, and a cubic and a half the breadth thereof; and thou shalt make two cherubims of gold; of beaten work shalt thou make them in the two ends of the mercy seat; and make one cherub on the other, on the one end, and on the other cherub on the other end. Even on the mercy seat shalt thou shalt we make the cherubims on the two ends thereof; and the cherubims shall stretch forth their wings on high, covering the mercy seat with their wings; and their faces shall look one to another toward the mercy seat shall the faces of the cherubim's feet; and thou shalt put the mercy seat above, upon the ark; and in the ark thou shalt put the testimony that I shall give thee; and there I will meet with thee; and I will commune with thee from above the mercy seat, from between the two cherubims, which are upon the mark, the ark of the testimony, of all the things which I give thee in commandment unto the children of Israel. Thou shalt also make a table, a shittamwood: two cubits shall be the length thereof, and a cubic the breadth thereof, and a cubic and a half the height thereof; and thou shalt overlay it with pure gold; and make there unto a crown of gold round about; and thou shalt make unto it a border of a handbreadth round about; and thou shalt make a golden crown to the border thereof round about; and thou shalt make for it four rings of gold; and put the rings in the four corners that are on the four feet thereof. Over against the border shall the rings be for the places of the staves to bear the table; and thou shalt make the staves of shittamwood and overlay them with gold that the table may be born with them; and thou shalt make the dishes thereof, and the spoons thereof, and the covers thereof, and the bowls thereof, to cover with all of pure gold shalt thou make them; and thou shalt set upon the table, shall bread before me always; and thou shalt make a candlestick of pure gold; of beaten work shall the candlestick be made; its base and its shaft, its bowls, its knobs, and its flowers shall be of the same; and six branches shall come up out of the sides of it: three branches of the candlestick out of the one side, and three branches of the candlestick out of the other side; three bowls made like unto almonds, with a knob and a flower in one branch, and three bowls made like almonds in the other branch, with a knob and a flower, so in the six branches that come out of the candlestick. And in the candlestick shall be four bowls made like unto almonds, with their knobs and their flowers; and there shall be a knob under the two branches of the same, and a knob under the two branches of the same, and a knob under the two branches of the same, according to the six branches that proceed out of the candlestick. Their knobs and their branches shall be of the same; all of it shall be one beaten work of pure gold; and thou shalt make the seven lamps thereof; and they shall light the lamps thereof that they may give light over against it; and the tongs thereof, and the snuff dishes thereof, shall be of pure gold. Of a talent of pure gold shall he make it, with all these vessels; and look that thou make them after their pattern, which was shown thee in the mount, Exodus 40, Holy Name Bible.
We will begin the 40-Clay Study Session. Can you hear me? And I will now turn it over to Dr. Gabriella Underwood.
Good afternoon. Correct my name, it is Gabriella. Um, it's okay. Um, in case any... Last time I didn't correct somebody, um, they ended up announcing to everybody that my name is Gabriella. So now I have to make a practice of correcting because I don't want anybody else to go through that. It's on my legal name, but that's not the point. We are here, we are here for the 40-Clay Workshop. Okay, can you still hear me? Okay, so we're here for the 40-Clay Workshop. And last year, we had broken off into groups. We're not going to do that this year because there's more people here. And we do have some handouts, but I don't know that everyone will be able to receive them. However, that information that we will be giving you is available electronically, and we can tell you how to access that later, okay? What we will be doing at this time is that we will be showing you what we've been going through here in Lansing in our nine o'clock AM workshops regarding this chart right here. This is, you know, this is the proper title, "The Divine Pattern of the Universe: Proving the Existence of Yahweh and Manifesting His Purpose by the Physical Creation Through the Dispensations and Ages." Now, first off, just to let you know some technical things regarding this chart, the way it's set up, plate 1 through 10 is here. Then it drops here. Plate 11 through 20 is here. Then it comes up here, 21 through 30, and then... Thanks again as well to when they had it and copied these and they got it. So I'm gonna go through it first. And just like the children's session, you saw how Frank had him. He went ahead and went through things first, and then he had people come up and go through it. 40 plates because of the time element. We may just tell you, would you please go through plate 1 through 5 the way that it was done, okay? And you are allowed to bring up your worksheet. We understand that you may have to look at the worksheet and look at the, at the chart. In the workshops, we have found out that we had to keep doing this, and eventually, it was here. Because you're going to be associating this information and what you're seeing here and understanding something, and eventually, you're going to learn other things. You're gonna learn how, how to actually pre-presenting rather than just standing here like this, okay? That's what happens in the workshops, all right? But that's all technical stuff. The bottom line is, is when you go through this and you do it on a repeated basis, Yahshua is going to increase, okay, in you that knowledge and understanding of this pattern or plan of salvation. And He will provide you with fruit from your labors, okay, of doing this. So we do encourage you that, you know, you take the opportunity right now that we're gonna be giving you to actually get up here when we, when we say, hey, how about you try this? We have had people who have been like, you know, from out of town. And we said, okay, well, how about you just do plate 1? Thank you, Justin, I appreciate that. And they, and they did just plate 1. So we all know that all of us would probably be able to at least do plate 1, so... So it shouldn't be anybody that wouldn't be able to at least do that, I think, okay? So, all right. Now, we usually say, well, you should do it also when you're doing this, like I said, this is a workshop. We also let people know that since you're, you're trying to present the vision, that's basically what this is. This is the vision on the chart of the pattern, of the Divine Pattern of the Universe, proving the existence of Yahweh and manifesting His purpose by the physical creation through the dispensations and ages. And that we point out that this here is an intangible tabernacle pattern right here. Because it is the one that was shown in the vision to Moses and to Dr. Kinley and also to John on the Isle of Pana, okay? And then we go ahead and we show that there's a three-foldness here that testifies to Yahweh, Elohim, and Yahshua. So looking at your handout here, okay? Now, there's some information here that's at the very top. There's the title of the plate. There's a number, okay? But then there's a word that says "down" or it says "up." These first five plates are all downward operations, meaning that you're going to start at the top, most holy place, holy place, court roundabout, pure principle, divine attributes, source of substance, Yahweh, Elohim, Yahshua. Do you understand that? But in our workshop, what we also have been asking people to do is to kind of follow a format because we want people to really understand what's going on. We're trying to show Yahweh, Elohim, and Yahshua. That's the main point. But if you follow a format, then it's sometimes a little easier for people to see that correlation all the way through, okay? So we generally say, well, we would like you to start with telling us the title of the plate, the number of the plate, the direction that you're gonna start, and then actually go down. Now, if you wanna skip all that, you can just say, well, these first five plates are very downward, if you're looking at them. And then proceed to actually do that. So, this is the intangible pattern. Plate 1, it's a downward operation. Most holy place, holy place, court roundabout. This plate is theoslopty, meaning divine wisdom. Plate 2, it's a downward operation. Pure principles, divine attributes, source of substance. The Godhead. Plate 3, a downward operation. Yahweh, Elohim, Yahshua. Cosmology, meaning genesis of the cosmos, a downward operation, starting in the most holy place. Of plate 4, okay? Now, looking at your sheet, what should I be saying? Louder. Very good. You won't see that written here, but guess what? First heaven is actually written here. So you'll eventually realize, oh, okay, that's the plate that I'm on. Third heaven, second heaven, first heaven. Chaosis. Plate 5, a downward operation. Okay, now, this is a simplified version. There are other versions of this to give more information because there is more information here. There's versions that actually tell you, and this one does give you... Okay, this one does give it to me. Where we have, for this one, chaosis, threefold ethereal darkness. So that's what you're explaining here to show for Yahweh, Elohim, and Yahshua is the threefold ethereal darkness. Plate 5, downward operation. So you have the deep secrets of Yahweh. And then you have the carbonness is blackness and the ethereal darkness, correct? Okay, so that's those first five plates. And then, now that you've come to the first day, what happens? Look at your paper, can you tell me? Louder. It's an upward operation for the first day. What's the operation for the second day? Third day? Fourth day? Fifth day? So you can see sometimes it's a little simple to remember which direction it is, to kind of think about it. Also, you wanna look at what you're pointing to because that will also let you know, okay, I am going up, okay? I'm in operation. So, for the first day, since we're upward operation, we're starting here in the court roundabout. Now, what's it say the court roundabout should be? Okay, and then in parentheses, it says first night, okay? So it's darkness, semi-light, cosmic light, or night, twilight, day, okay? You see that? Okay, second day, upward operation. And now, you should notice that I haven't been following the format the way that I told you. What should I have said? First day, plate 6, right? Upward operation, okay? So that's the format that I should be doing. So you can see that there's a lot to kind of go through, but what are we trying to show you? That Yahweh is the Divine Pattern of the Universe and that he's proving his existence, okay? And manifesting his purpose by the physical creation through the dispensations and ages. Now, in our workshop, we're actually covering volume 1, pages 57 through... Is that the number? 66? 69? 69. So, in volume 1, in volume 1, pages 57 to 69, that covers plate 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14... 13. And then 14 is brighter because of something up here, okay? So it actually stops here with the migratory pattern. So that's actually as far as we cover right now as far as the detail aspect because we do do more than just what you see here. We actually go back to the Elohim book and read the sections and go through that. But for this exercise right now, we're gonna call for a few... First of all, let's just call for a volunteer. Someone who thinks they understand what I asked them to do. Very simply, and I want you to go only through the first five plates. All right, thank you. Here we have attributes, intermediate, and here we have source, substance, concrete. Plate 3, which points to the Godhead. Here we have Yahweh, Father. Here we have Elohim, work...
The vision of the T, the waters above here, second day of creation, as vapor, all right? Then we have a mist, which is an intermediary between liquid and vapor, see? Third day of creation, we have the water rolling back, the dry land appeared, and the seed of vegetation sprang forth, then it went into fruition. So if you notice, as each of these middle plates, which is the holy place, the holy place represents an intermediary principle. So you have the seed of vegetation coming forth, then it went into a bud-like state, that's an intermediary state or a holy place state. Then it goes through another veil, and in the most holy place, it goes into fruition, fruition. Because the most holy place, they have fruition here. Just like in the tabernacle, you had Aaron draw that budded what? Almonds. So you have fruition in the most holy place. And you'll see all the correlations of fruition in the most holy place. Like when Israel was over in Canaan's land, it was fruition here, all right? Okay, the next one was... Forty. You have on our sheet here, yeah, the sun grew and starred. So the sun, and it's for seasons and signs. And then the sun, the relationship between the sun and the earth, and the sun, the earth being tilted 23 and 3/4 degrees causes the seasons. So you have a death and a burial, with fall and winter, spring. Would be like, is the resurrection or the holy place? Then summer is the most holy place, all right? And the fifth day of creation, you have plate 10. Okay, you have the archeological and biological kings, biological animation and biological formation. On our sheets here, okay, it's an upward operation. All right, so plate 10 says formation of insects, large swimming animals, and the archeological or biological kings. So what we have here is biological formation in the court roundabout, the spirit animated them. Then there's a division on the 15 here, you have birds and fishes. So this holy place is an intermediary state. So this represents your amphibian plane. Then he puts them into their different kingdoms in the most holy place.
A reminder, this is a one-room schoolhouse, okay? So he did what we would be doing in later sessions because we do build on what we're doing. So the first speaker, that's where we start off there. What he's doing is where we're working toward, okay? So he did follow directions for the bigger, more advanced level. But for those of you who've never done this, I would prefer that you go ahead and stay with what the first speaker was doing, okay? Just go ahead and do it the way that it's on the sheet, okay? So don't be afraid to come up here after Rohan. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Okay, I'll be doing eleven through sixteen or eleven through fifteen? So according to the sheet, this is the sixth day, and it's on an upward operation. So in the court roundabout, you have body, which we see the body of God. Yahweh brings life into him. And then in the intermediate state, we have soul in the holy place. And then in the most holy place, we have spirit. Plate twelve is an upward operation. We have Adam in a deep sleep in the court roundabout. And then it says, Adam is presented with Eve in the holy place. And in the most holy place, Adam and Eve in perfect peace, put on the chart, it says, see Yeshua in his bride, your garden Eden. Plate thirteen is an upward operation. In the court roundabout, in Egypt, which represents death or darkness. In the holy place, we're in the wilderness of Sinai. And in the most holy place is the promised land. Plate number fourteen is a downward operation. We have here is the third heaven, is a jelly transmission plate. We have the third heaven. And in the, that's in the most holy place, in the holy place, we have the demonic angelic angels, which were driven out, cast out. And then the court roundabout, they're immersed in ethereal darkness, demonic angels immersed in ethereal darkness in the court roundabout. Plate fifteen is a demonic transgression plate, and it is a downward operation. In the most holy place, we have Adam and Eve in the garden of rest. And in the holy place, we have Adam driven out from the garden. And in the court roundabout, we have Adam and Eve outside the garden. Is that it? Okay, I'm gonna ask the class of, how was that? Okay, we have another volunteer that's already volunteered. Karen is going to be presenting plate sixteen through twenty. Please remember to tell us the title, the plate number, and direction, and then start in the direction that you're supposed to start in, and start telling us what it is. Thank you.
For plate sixteen, anti-Delorean apostasy, plate sixteen. And this is in the upward direction. And here, in the court roundabout, it shows Cain and Abel with his parents. And then, in the holy place, it shows Cain and his wife into the land of Naz. And in the most holy place, it shows the city of Enoch. Birth translation of Enoch, plate seventeen, is in the upward. So in the court roundabout, it is showing Enoch's birth into the world. And then in the most holy place, it's showing Enoch's prophecies, prophesies. And the holy place, thank you. And then the most holy place is Enoch translated. Noah's preparation entering to the ark, entering the ark in plate eighteen. And in plate eighteen, this is also in the upward position. And then it shows fear in the court roundabout, that Noah was preparing the ark for a hundred and twenty years. And this is the time that he was also preaching in the four corners of the earth. And then in the holy place, it shows that man be spout in the ark of vision. And then in the holy place, it shows that the seal in the ark of salvation. And the flood in plate nineteen is also in upward, going upward. And it shows in the court roundabout, Elohim immersed all flesh, which was a death. And then in the holy place, the ark moved over the waters. And that was for forty years. And then in the most holy place, the ark exalted above the mountains. And then the beginning of post-Delorean. And plate twenty, which is also in the going upward, in the court roundabout, it shows the figure of baptism. And then in the holy place, it shows eight souls saved in the ark. And then in the most holy place, it shows Noah covenant with the rainbow, which is also a promise to us that our existence, our world, would not be destroyed by water again.
Um, Carlos, can I just say, I'll be doing plate twenty-one through Pianobi? My Pianobi? I'll be doing plate twenty-one through twenty-five. All right, so Noah was, Noah was being here in his death, plate twenty-one, this will be rolling down. Now, after the beginning of the post-Delorean age, and they came out of the ark, Noah had his finger, so he had been a fruit of the spear. And then the second part of that, in the holy place, had a transgression of Ham, right? Now, if you look at it, Noah being the father, Shem, Jacob, and Ham. And so Ham being the third part of those brothers, of course, he had to be cast out. And so he had transferred against Noah and things like that, so that's a whole story of, I didn't even know that part back then. So, down. Noah, before he died, he did not bless any person for his son, and he said, cursed became, a cursed became. And he said that Yahweh persuaded Jacob to do the same thing to Shem, which was prophesying that the Jews in the Gentiles would be all in one house. Plate number twenty-two, construction of the Tower of Babel, plate twenty-two. This one's going upward, right? And so even though Yahweh promised that he would not destroy by flood, he had the same adversary, because in Genesis eight twenty-one, even after Yahweh destroyed, because a man's heart was evil continually, Yahweh still said in Genesis eight twenty-one that he would not destroy by flood, but he knew that man's heart was still evil continually. So of course you had Satan trying to build a Tower of Babel to get back into heaven. And so, and this particular plate, that's the satanic foundation of the Tower of Babel. Going up, you have the Tower of Babel, and then you have the Spirit law or the spoken word here. All right? Abraham became Mochezadek. Plate twenty-three, this one is going back, right? And so, when Abraham came to Mochezadek, the princess became, I missed it. Um, crazy saying. He blessed Abraham, Abraham paid tithes to Mochezadek, and he blessed Abraham. And then, so here you have the birth of Isaac, the birth of Isaac, which was a promise to be. Yahweh said, through Isaac shall I see thee called. He blessed all nations through Isaac. And that's where we got our blessing from. And then here, you have the resurrection of Isaac, once Abraham was given Isaac, he was also tested and proved in Genesis twenty-second chapter. And he said, offer up your only begotten son, Isaac, whom thy love... And Abraham will obey to that, and he offered up Isaac, even though it didn't look like he did. And Hebrews eleven chapter says, by faith Abraham offered up Isaac. And so Isaac was resurrected off the altar, talking to the Messiah being resurrected, right? Um, migratory pattern, we have plate twenty-four. This one is going up. Now, because Yahweh promised Abraham in fifteenth chapter of Genesis that he was gonna multiply seeds as the saints and thieves, stars of heaven. But no for sure, they will come down to a land to not be as replaced in the Bible, here the four hundred years after Yahweh will come in and deliver them out. Is that right? So this particular plate, this is when Yahweh sent them down into Egypt, because Yahweh said about purposes, I will also bring the pass. And because he purposed they would come down, he calls them salmon of the land, which was a reason. But the reason was because Yahweh said that they would come down to Egypt, so Yahweh took them down to Egypt, right? All right? Where am I at? Twenty-four, all right. Okay, so here you have the wilderness of sin, the wilderness of Sinai. And so after Yahweh came in after the four hundred year after the promise that he'd given to Abraham, Yahweh led them up to the wilderness of Sinai. Looked like Moses led them out, didn't it? But Yahweh said, I come in to deliver them out. So Yahweh led them out, that's why you had the cloud that they were following, that led them out into the wilderness, which is also talking about the Messiah. Because John had... I want you forward. Okay, sorry. Okay, I'm preaching, I'm sorry. Okay, so then this plate right here, you have the promised land, which is hand of land, that Israel had to inherit. That was a promise. And so plate twenty-five is talking about the pattern. Plate twenty-five, this one is going down. You have the most holy place, you have the holy place, and you have the court roundabout, giving you three for just one, tabernacle pattern. Sorry.
You can see it is hard to kind of stay simple, because we have learned so much. You know, being in this school, we've learned a lot about Yahweh, our heavenly Father, his purpose, pattern, plan. And when you have that written in your heart and mind, you're more than willing to express it. So I thank you for those things. But the reason why we try to keep it simple is because we are, like I said, a one-schoolhouse, and there are individuals here who are perhaps hearing it for the very first time, and we wanna make sure that they can see the pattern first. And then once they see the pattern, you know, they can, we can encourage them, well, go back and read that section, you know? It's like a new pair of glasses for them now, that they can see what's going on. I now need a volunteer for where she left off. And I'll warn you that we don't really express the three full aspects here for plate twenty-six, as you look at your sheet. And so I'll be asking for a volunteer to go through plate twenty-six through thirty. I see, I see eyes moving around. Oh, I see somebody, courage is, I see courage rising up. Who is it? Looking for Yahweh, can you rise up? All right. Recognize the song, right? You've been singing quite great.
Good afternoon, right? Um, I'm Paula Phillips, and I'm from Taffiel slash Saginaw, but in the body of Yeshua. So, hey, we're one body, one family. Okay, so I'm on plate number twenty-six, and that's the history plate. And this is a downward plate. So this is a descending plate, right? Okay, so this is the history, plate twenty-six, and this is the degeneration of Satan's kingdom. And what we have here is Babylon. This is the image of Daniel, with Daniel's dream, Nebuchadnezzar's dream. But this is an image that Daniel gave the vision to, well, Yeshua gave the vision to Daniel, to King Nebuchadnezzar. So we have Babylon, and that was a prime ago, right? And then we had the deeds and turgids, that's flighting to the holy place, right, or Agraisha. Is that correct? I'm just going off. We gotta look at the sheet. Because you just got it, just one, one image. This is one image. And then we have paint in a paperoam down here, and I think it was clay and brass and clay? Brass, all right, thank you very much. All right, and clay, thank you very much. But this is one image, and this is going down. This is the degeneration of Satan's kingdom, that's plate twenty-six. Plate twenty-seven is the conception, birth, and flight. Get it right here. And this says, it's a downward operation, Yeshua's conception in Nazareth. So we have, in the most holy place, we have Yeshua in the temple. No, let me, no, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, Yeshua conception in Nazareth as being the holy place. And then we have Yeshua's birth in Bethlehem in the holy place. And then we have Yeshua's flight into Egypt in the court roundabout. This is plate twenty-eight, the return and memorial passover. And on the sheet, we have it as going, as being an upward operation, this is a sinew. And we have in the court roundabout, Yeshua called out of Egypt. And then we have in the holy place, Yeshua and the scribes. And then we have in the twenty-eighth, no, excuse me, in the most holy place, going up, Yeshua in the temple. Then we have plate twenty-six, baptism and ministry. Plate twenty-nine, going upward, it's upward operation. We have in the court roundabout, Yeshua entering his ministry at John's baptism, that's the court roundabout. And then we have in the holy place, Satan and Yeshua controversy in the wilderness of Judea, forty days, that's the holy place. And then we have in the most holy place, Yeshua's sermon on the mount. And that's plate twenty-nine. Then we have plate thirty, this miracles and transfiguration, and it is an upward operation. And then we have in the court roundabout, we have Yeshua steals the water. And then we have in the holy place, Yeshua raised Nazareth from the dead. And then in the most holy place, we have Yeshua transfiguration in the most holy place. This is plate thirty.
My second key. All right, good. Okay, I'll be doing, funny, thirty-one through thirty-nine. Okay, and plate thirty-one, justification, burial, and resurrection and ascension. And it is an upward plate. So we have here, Yeshua's death, burial, and resurrection. Then we show here, Yeshua resurrected. And Yeshua's also has that resurrection, those forty days of his appearances that he was seen. And then we had here, in this most holy place, was his ascension, Yeshua's ascension. Plate thirty-two is Pentaphos, that's a downward plate. So we have the new heaven, or the new covenant, showing for a heaven was opened. We have the baptism of the Holy Spirit and promise upon the Jews. We have the washing of the regeneration, and Passover revealed and understood in the court roundabout. Plate thirty-three is a persecution plate, and that is an upward process. We have the Jews persecuted, of the believing Jews and the stoning of Stephen listed on the chart. Then we have the disurging and scattering of the believing Jews in the holy place. And in the most holy place, it's showing for the New Testament and heaven being opened. On plate thirty-four, we see a downward plate, it's the conversion of the Jews. So we have the new, I'm sorry, did I say plate thirty-four? Yeah, conversion of the Gentiles, I'm sorry. We have the new heaven, the new covenant, heaven open, the baptism of the Holy Spirit, the promise upon the believing Jews, Gentiles. And then we have James' heel in the court roundabout plate. And then on plate thirty-five, that is an upward process. And we have the New Testament, heaven open. We have, yes, on plate thirty-five, I'm sorry. We have upward, we have Peter's resurrection from prison in Judea forty-three A.D., reconfirms Yeshua's resurrection in A.D. thirty-three. We have Peter's resurrection from prison in Judea forty-three A.D., reconfirms Yahshua's resurrection in A.D. thirty-three. Then we show Peter and the counsel at Jerusalem, A.D. fifty-two, in the holy place. And in the most holy place is showing for the New Testament and heaven opened.
I am Trail from Merida, Mississippi. I will be doing, uh, plates thirty-six through forty. First John five, seven through eight, plate thirty-six is a downward operation. And here in the most holy place, you have the unity of spirit, the Father, the Word, and the Holy Spirit, and these three, all one. And then the holy place, you have the spirit bearing witness in the earth. And in the court roundabout, you have the water, represented by the brazen labor, and the blood represented by the brazen oxen. Makes us apostasy, plate thirty-seven. It's a downward operation. And the most holy place, you have the head of the mystery of iniquity. The holy place, you have the mystery Babylon. And the court roundabout, you have the cardinal ordinances restored. Makes us eschatology, is that how you pronounce that? It's plate thirty-eight. It also is a downward operation. And the most holy place, you have the new covenant, heaven opened. In the holy place, you have immortality, where Yahshua revealed from heaven. And the court roundabout is the lake of fire. Makes us, the new heaven and new earth, plate thirty-nine. It is a upward operation. And in the court roundabout, you have the renovation of the earth. In the holy place, you have the new heaven and the new earth. And in the most holy place, you have heaven. And plate forty is the ending tower of makeup. Plate forty, and you got the sanctum of sanctuaries embraced.
So, as you can see, that's the basics. All these little ones are... So as you can see, that's the basics of, of what that particular handout is about, and what the basics would be when someone first comes in to the workshop, that we would have what we refer to as exercise one, that we would, and learn to do it for all forty plates, obviously. And then eventually, as you saw some of the speakers come up here, uh, there's the also the aspect of learning the other parts of this tabernacle, because as Dr. Kenley expresses in, uh, volume one textbook, he gives correlations, uh, and shows us that, uh, well, starting here, in the, um, where he shows us that, uh, A is the most holy place, and B is the second veil, and then C is the holy place, and then D is the first veil, and then E is the court roundabout. And then he takes and shows correlations between the plates. We also have an exercise where we go ahead, and, um, you may have noticed this place down here, where we go ahead and we do the, um, the, um, try to understand the correlations that are expressed there in pages, um, fifty-seven through sixty-nine. Um, and to kind of show you something about that, I'm gonna see if Dr. David Underwood will be going to go ahead and do that at this time.
You have it, you know? This, this is what we're working with. I like to end up putting it this way. Dr. Kenley for each section according to Moses' vision. That's why I'm showing the, this page of the textbook. This is Moses having the vision. This is Moses having the vision. There's some of you that understand, some of you haven't been around. So this is Moses having the vision of Alphim, and he was on the front cover. Right? And then you have the bond of Abner. But this is Moses, you see, in the days of creation. So we're on page fifty-seven. And Dr. Kenley basically uses three plates that he uses in his correlations. And the important one here is plate number thirty-six, is the unity of the spirit. And that's a very important doctrinal difference between what we teach and what Christendom and other religions teach. Because they teach what? Trinity. So he's showing the unity of the spirit. And he actually doesn't show the Godhead, but he brings it in right away in that first paragraph. So he is showing the unity of the spirit by using these plates. And again, you can go through, this is the divine pattern of the tabernacle, intangible. It's not just pattern, it is a divine pattern of the tabernacle. And so there is like most holy place, holy place in court roundabout, and then as the children went through the day, the Father, the Word, the Holy Spirit, or Yahweh, Alphim, Yahshua, or simply what? One, two, three. That's how simple the gospel is. So then in this plate, Godhead, which is divinity, but it's also the divine paternal nature. This is one universal spirit embodiment. Dr. Kenley uses other phrases to describe this embodiment. This is universal spirit law. So those of you that are going to Fort Myers, what is the law of the spirit of life? That's in this embodiment, isn't it? He creates it, and then he does walk with it, animates it. So this here, again, we say the Father, the Word, the Holy Spirit, but it's Yahweh, Alphim, and Yahshua. Now, first John five, seven, and eight are the witnesses that he uses in the earth to testify to the three that are in heaven, which are the Father, Word, and Spirit. And these three are one, and again, it's not, they're not a trinity, but they are a unity. And then you have the spirit bearing witness with the blood and the water. So those are the first three plates that he uses in that section. Now he goes and uses five plates to end up defining what spirit is. He uses five plates. Define Yahweh, who is spirit. Does anybody happen to have the, uh, textbook open? So I need to have theology, don't I? There is theology, theosophy. Now what does theosophy mean? Divine wisdom, divine, the knowledge of divine things. Then he has one more, which is... Where's plate forty? Do I have enough for forty? So which plate did I miss? Godhead, oh, we gotta have the unity of the spirit. Now, let me ask you, can we correlate using the forty plate chart? It's kind of hard to me to go to plate one, to plate two, to plate three, but when you start bringing in plate thirty-six and forty, on a smaller chart, it's a little bit easier, but when you have a full, big forty plate chart of something this size, it makes it harder. Can you see the convenience of taking the principles and laying them out next to each other? I know there's drawbacks, I know some of you way back there can't see this, but if you have a small session, you can take and use correlations. How about this section, the unity, is there life after death? Page eighty-six in the first volume. He uses, I think, eight plates, if not seven, to correlate. He uses also plates in volume four. He uses eighteen plates in volume four. So you can, if you have the room, you can put them right next to each other to do the correlations. And to me, they're, all this is a teaching tool. That's all it is, is a teaching tool. Here. So now, he ta, he's taking these five plates to define Yahweh, which is spirit. And that's basically the very first sentence under the section, theosophy. Now, defining Yahweh, which is spirit. If you go back to the very first volume, page one, the very last sentence of the very first paragraph, Dr. Kenley is talking about associates. This school, and some of you don't know, is meant to raise up ministers to Yahshua, right? To raise up ministers. And these ministers have been qualified to detect, identify, and prove. But detect, identify, and prove what? He goes on to say, the divine pattern of the universe, that's the title of page fifty-seven, proving the what? The existence of Yahweh. There's people that don't believe there's a Yahweh, right? Don't, some people don't believe there's a Yahweh. And manifesting Yahweh's purpose by the physical creation through the dispensations and ages. That's what these classes are doing. Proving and detecting, or identifying, and proving, detecting, and identifying the existence of Yahweh. What's the next one? Is proving the existence or exposing that mystery of iniquity. That's what volume four is, the mystery of Yahweh, the mystery of iniquity. And the third part that we're exposing is tracing that mark of the beast, that six, 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 down through the ancient dispensations to his conclusion, was his eschatology, where you have, what is it? Study of last things, judgment, heaven, hell, death, and immortality. That's what this class is about. Detecting, identifying, and proving. But we also explain, teach, preach, reveal the gospel of Yahshua Messiah. So it's just a perspective. So he's using these five plates to explain Yahweh. Anybody the Daniel chart, just real quick? What is this one? Proving the existence. Some people believe, don't believe there's a devil. So proving the existence and destruction of Satan and his demons through the dispensations and ages. So we have to do it all through the what? Ages and dispensations, because that's our witnesses. So those are the five plates Dr. Kenley uses to explain Yahweh. Now he goes into what, three plates next, or four plates next? I see nobody has their textbook looked. So we have cosmogony and the pattern. Just two plates, correct? So now cosmogony, someone says, is the genesis of the cosmos. You could say the genesis of the firmament. And that's a downward operation. You can tell that we're gonna start at the third heaven, because in the court roundabout, you have the first heaven. So you have the third heaven, the most holy place, you have the second heaven in the holy place, and then in the court roundabout, you have that first heaven. So now, we go into chaos. Now in chaos, we're gonna be picking up plate number fourteen. Now chaos, we're dealing with the three-fold ethereal darkness. On your sheet, you have the deep secrets of Yahweh, right? But it's actually the hidden deep secrets of the mysteries of Yahweh. See how you can add more in your explanation? It's the hidden deep secrets of the mysteries of Yahweh. It's like, some of you have already said, here he is, he has all the mysteries locked up in himself. And you're not gonna wrestle that revelation from him until he's ready to what? Reveal it to you. All we can do, it's like on this chart right here, is point, if he allows you to point. Because he has to give the increase, he has to give the revelation. Now, so this is the hidden deep secrets to the mysteries of Yahweh, carving it for splatness in the holy place, and then ethereal darkness in the court roundabout. Well, this plate, angelic transgression, you know what? There was a point in time, there was no war in heaven. So it was a third heavenscape. And then you have the word transgression right here on the veil. Then you come into the holy place, and this is where you have that mark of the beast on that angel, six, six, six. You know what? The angels on this veil, none of them are identified by numbers. Matter of fact, on the plate before, are any angels identified on these angels? Is there any numbers? There's no numbers on these, right? There's no numbers on those angels, not identified. But once there's that transgression, then they're what? Marked. And so they're now cast out, you see the angel casting them out with a sword, and then they're gonna be immersed in ethereal darkness. And you can see right down here, if you come look close, what's gonna be on it? Six, six, six. Now this is where you can start tracing the mark of the beast. Down to that conclusion, which is going to be what? Eschatology, because what you see in the court roundabout? Six, six, six. So now, we only have a few more minutes, I've been told. So now Dr. Kenley goes into the first and second day. And in the first day, we're gonna be dealing with the three-fold And in the first day, we're gonna be dealing with the three-fold light. As Dr. Rohan Ross, Yahweh divided the light from the darkness. But it's a three-fold light. So again, we're moving into the upward operation. You have darkness, semi-light, and cosmic light. Or you end up having first night, or night, twilight, and then you have day. And then in the second day, we're looking for the three-fold waters. So you have the waters beneath the firmament. These are only notes, folk. They may just say waters beneath the firmament. It's all right to add the word "the." Then moving into the holy place, we have semi-liquid. Move it into the most holy place, we have the waters above the firmament. Or you have liquid, mist, and vapor. Now we're gonna, he goes into the third day, and I need the other plates that... Because when I think of the third day, what should we automatically think about? Yahshua resurrected the what? The third day. So the vegetation resurrecting on the third day. No, I didn't wanna... No, no, you're right. So then we have this one, which is the crucifixion. Crucifixion. They don't have the cross yet. Yeah. We're looking for thirty-six. Yeah. Wherever it's, you'll find it. So here we have the third day. Seed of vegetation came up after the dry land appeared. So Dr. Rohan likes to put it basically, seed, plant, and fruit. Aha, somebody grabbed a look at it. So then Yahshua resurrected the third day according to the scriptures, correct? And then to get more into it, then you have the witnesses of the earth that Yahshua pierced in the side and forthwith came out, blood and water, and he had given up the spirit, right? So now, I think that's the last time that he uses plate number thirty-one. Now he's going to end up using, I need first day again. And then I need plate thirty-one, I think again. Because if he uses the third day, what do we think? We think resurrection. He has resurrection. Okay. So we've already gone through the first day and the third day, but the fourth day, there we go, that's what we missed. And the fourth day is still up here. Now we have... And again, Dr. Kinley goes into this in section, page fifty-seven through sixty-nine. Matter of fact, even earlier, he has a section where the scientists don't believe that you can have vegetation without the natural S U N, right? We can't believe the Bible, because I guess biologically, you can't have plants without the S U N. But see, they don't understand that it is the S U N that is truly the light of the world and caused the animation of the, I'll call it, plants. So again, the fourth day, you're gonna have fall and winter, spring. Now we're into what, right now it's called summer, or that fruition part. That's why you have it in the most holy place here. And again, there's, folks, this is just basic. And many people are still only hearing it for the first, second time. So those of you with their old heads, thank you for being patient. And of course, it's pointing to who? Yahshua the Messiah. That truly, this event that took place of Yahshua's death, Yahshua's burial, Yahshua's resurrection, forty days of perishes, and Yahshua's ascension, and then how pouring that Holy Spirit of promise is right here. "Baptism of Holy Spirit of Promise Upon the Believing Jews." Was it poured out upon all Jews? If it'd been poured out upon all Jews, then they never would have stoned Stephen, would they? Right? And then, here it says, "Baptism of Holy Spirit of Promise Upon the Believing Gentiles." Did he pour it out upon all believing, all Gentiles? No, because Herod would have never have killed James. Does that make sense from a logical way? So here it is. It's all pointing to Yahshua's death, burial, resurrection. Because some people don't believe Yahshua died, buried, and resurrected. So now we're gonna be moving into, and some plates can be paired with each other. Now we're gonna go to the fifth and sixth day. And again, it's very simply, Adam was made by soul and spirit. And you can actually read that, I think, under theosophy, if not under the sixth day. And again, whoa, did I have the fifth day first? Did I get the fifth day? It is the fifth and sixth day, correct? Adam switched. So now, on the second day, he created, divided the waters, the firmament, correct? So now on the fifth day, what does he do? Populate it with the creatures. So he creates the insects, he creates the amphibian creatures, and then he has to have the spirit of animation or the biological animation. Then you have the holy place, the large swimming animals. And then of course, you have then the birds here on the veil, which you have the angels on the veil here. And you had the buds and flowers on the third day veil, all correlating. So they have the ornithological and biological kings, because Yahshua is the true king of kings, but everything else is a type and shadow pointing to him. So now we have pretty simply the division between male... Are you finding the other plate for me? We're gonna have the baptism and ministry plate. And we should have plate thirty-one, true or false? So how many plates? We're doing division between male and female. Now listen, if we think about male and female, we should be thinking about bringing everything together, right? If you have everything coming out of this environment, then everything should be going back, that is his, into his body, correct? Tim, just tell me what you are. One, twelve, one thirty-two, okay. You know what, folks, I haven't done this in a while either, unlike everybody else. I need to practice and exercise. So here again, we have this key point here, this witnessed by the tabernacle pattern, the vision between male and female. Eve is taken out and presented to Adam. They are in a peaceful rest state. And then of course, then we get into plate number fifteen here where you have then plate fifteen and fourteen paired. This took place in heaven, this took place in earth. Here you have, they're in a third heaven state or garden of Eden. You have the transgression, you have transgression. Adam and Eve are driven out, or Adam's driven out. And then you have Satan's driven out. And so they're paired together. Well, now we have Adam and his bride, so we need to have Yahshua and his bride. And then, see, they're all, the believing Jews are baptized of the Holy Spirit of promise. The believing Jews are baptized of a Holy Spirit of promise. And then you could trace them all the way back to Abraham, right? Because in Isaac, all nations are going to be blessed. And so it's not just the Jews, but the, and the Gentiles. And matter of fact, those who are natural Jews now, if they don't believe in Yahshua the Messiah, they are truly what? They're Gentiles. And now the Pentecost. This is where now you can be part of the body of Yahshua if you were a Jew naturally, so. And then seven years later, you have the conversion of the Gentiles. We have the baptism of the Holy Spirit of promise upon Cornelius and his household in Caesarea, right? In AD forty, forty-one. Where now you and us, because most of us, as I look in here, are Gentiles after the flesh. And so now we can all be in that body of Yahshua the Messiah. So now we have just one more section, real quick. We have the migratory pattern. Think I did it. And thirty-one. So now twenty-nine, or actually thirteen, is a migratory pattern. And I have this a little difficult sometimes. If Tim McNamara is here, because he's good in saying it, this is a perfect three-fold pattern of the tabernacle and the greater and more perfect tabernacle of the universe. Dr. McNamara, can you shout it out if you hear?
That's right.
All right. So this migratory pattern, you can take this migratory pattern, you can take this divine pattern of the tabernacle to understand something about Yahweh's purpose that is gonna take that dark, sin-sick soul, non-knowledgeable of Yahshua the Messiah, and change it from a carnal dead mind into a living soul. And then, we have the baptism and ministry. Well, when I think of migratory pattern, they were what? Baptized in the cloud and in the sea. That's what 1 Corinthians, the tenth chapter, says, doesn't it? So then I should say baptism ministry. So Yahshua the Messiah, he was prepared in sacrificial body, but he also, his ministry started at the baptism of John, right? And then of course, then he moved straightway out into the wilderness. As the children of Israel, they were baptized, and they went straightway into the wilderness, correct? They were tempted of the devil. Then they kinda backslide a little bit, just a little bit. Someone sat up in the front. And eventually, see, Yahshua is, now Yahshua's Sermon on the Mount. And then, wasn't there a Sermon on the Mount with this one basically back here? Okay. Someone touched on that in a lecture, I think, on Friday night. And then of course, we have everything revolving around the crucifixion, burial, resurrection, and ascension of Yahshua the Messiah. And that's what we need to believe, that Yahshua went through this. And as another speaker spoke about the other day, you need to believe also that that one was back here with the children of Israel, leading them and fighting for them and delivering them all through their journey from death unto life into the promised land, which is only what? Type and shadow and an allegory of what the third heaven is about. Now that's only... A tidbit. But these are tools. And you can get them and use them.
Okay, yeah. So you can see that that's, you know, just something that we... There's a lot here. So we've been continuing with the forty plate chart for quite a while now, two years. And we're gonna break, because there is gonna be another class session at four o'clock, okay? Give you a chance to think and enjoy. But... The Bubba's break, the exology, then the drawing, or what? Okay, thank you. So we go ahead with the exology, then stick around, there will be a drawing.
Thank you, everyone, and Dr. Underwood. That concludes this session's lecture. And we will all now stand for an exology. Our next session will be from four to five thirty PM. Hang around for the raffle too, don't forget that. You're gonna do the, okay, right after the exology. "Now to him who is able to keep you from falling and to present your purpose before the presence of his glory with exceeding joy, to the only wise Elohim our Savior and Yahshua the Messiah our sovereign, belong glory, majesty, dominion, and power, both now and forever." Let us all say hallelujah.